Delivery.
I'll approve the agenda in a minute.
Second.
Second discussion.
I want this morning, um, last Friday we tried to, since we have a new trailer now, we can haul our roller around. So we went and tried to blade grade some asphalt on Finch for that road keeps on. So we put a base course in Friday and today we're going to put a service force on it. Get it leveled out, it ride hit real a lot better even after the course, but got our tack cart powered back up and running, so we've got. Tack down, so we're trying to do it the right way, but we're bladed in and did a good job, so I'm gonna go out there and see what's looking this morning, but that'll be. Ready for winter again, so hopefully, yeah. And then I was doing our normal maintenance stuff, I did send you guys an email about a request for some street lighting. Provide. Because. I don't know, in my opinion, I think we just need to. Seems like they already have a street light at their main entrance to the city. Request was for a mile west and then another, what was that other street that comes in from the west? Two lights, I don't remember what the costs are for them, I'm sure the costs have gone up to install. But I guess I don't really see the need for it, there was just one person making the request. So I might just respond back and then we're gonna say we evaluated the situation, you know, and think that Lawrence lighting right now, so.
Is the street side for that up, up, so it's reflective, but can you see?
Well, it should be, it's a state highway, so they've got them highly reflected and ready, I don't know if our county ones, I'd have to look at our county ones to see. Um, if that one is, but they should be.
They want, they wanted one on nine and.
And then the next dogwood.
Yeah. And then was that three, three sixty five or three fifty five?
But size three, yeah, yeah. Only big.
Yeah, I thought in town, okay.
So, but I guess I just don't.
Is there one on the north side of?
I don't believe there is.
A nine?
I guess, oh, no, no, I don't think there is, but they do have one on Eagle Lane coming into Fertile from the main street.
The main, main, right.
That's been there for years.
Yeah, yeah.
So. It's kind of where I'm at with that, unless you guys. Have a different opinion. No, okay.
No, I'd say, yeah.
Well, it's just an ongoing expense from here on out for lighting.
Right.
Right. What's I've got for you this morning?
Good. Thanks, Rich. Uh, drainage. Standpoints, I think.
Motion to approve the stamp warrant.
One second, one second, for discussion. Here now, as. Let's look at those. If motion approved the claims. Only promotion to approve the claim.
I'll second it.
Second, for discussion, you know, it's very. Reports today. Uh, payroll.
One new one, nurse, and some sheriffs.
For sure.
Motion to approve the payroll.
Sorry, I'll second it. The moving second, the discussion. Hearing on all those papers, I.
I.
So sometimes motion will care.
Full staff.
Yes. You saw me using.
Yeah.
Yeah, finally, let's leave, just one more sticker on. Hey, the resolution. Emergency or for the resolution to state, set the date for election and imposition of certain emergency medical services to be taxed in our county.
Can we have a little discussion about that before we read it? Absolutely. I want a bunch of, I got a bunch of questions here.
Okay.
This resolution that was drawn up, we knew all along that we could do. A one percent local option income surtax and also a percentage on. The property tax, last week, we decided to go with a seventy five cent per thousand on the property tax. They take it that that one percent local option income surtax off the table, or is that? In other words, it shows me here that here's our options, but when it gets down to the bottom part of the resolution, it just says we're doing this all with property tax.
Yeah, you can do it, state allows for copper, one or the other or combination.
Yeah, combination.
Of the two, yeah, and the income surtax produces very little money. When a bagel was going to get ninety thousand on a consumer tax. At ten thousand five hundred people.
Yep, and Terry told me that at that meeting that night, that's why I brought it up at one of these meetings a while back, there wasn't very much. But it would kind of spread it out, so it seems like everything gets dumped on property tax. And it would kind of spread it out, so the people that were renting, even though their taxes, even though the rent's probably gonna go up, they're not. They're gonna, they're not gonna associate that with this, where if they had a one percent on their income tax. It would at least say, okay, here's what that's going for. And it kind of spreads it out, because everything gets dumped on property tax.
And I a hundred percent behind you, I, I wish there was a different way to do this. Um, I wish, I wish we could go per capita, walk into your house and say you have three people living here, this is your amount. But unfortunately, this is what the state gives us.
But why didn't we, are we adding that to the resolution? Right now, the way it looks to me, that's off the table here.
It's off the table, that's right now, according to that.
And I'm not for that, I mentioned that at meetings before, I thought it should be use of both of them.
Well, that's why I voted against plastic, it wasn't in favor, and I'm still not in favor, but the way it's being taxed, I mean. Truthfully, probably should go back to state legislators and make them redo this, because it's just not fair.
No, it's not, we get, you know, we finally. We go to meetings where they complain about everything, everything dumping on the property owners, and of course, those are usually, farmers are complaining about that, which I totally understand. And then we turn around and we get mental health, state decides to pick up mental health. So that's gonna come off, and this is gonna go on, you know, I figured it out on my tack, it's taxes, and I'm. Going to get forty two dollars taken off of it for mental health, and then this is gonna cost me a hundred and forty two dollars, which is not, it's cheap. For getting an ambulance in Worth County, you know, but it's still the idea of. I still think that one percent surtax should be used, but the board decided against that?
We decided to stick just with the. The committee, we just had to come up with the amount of the dollar amount of money, the committee did. So this board is ultimately the one that makes the decision on. The tax, we need, we need, um, well, we need more, we need five hundred four thousand dollars is what we can get.
Now, I was gonna ask you about that, because that's the twenty two valuation, do you want to go to the twenty three valuation, or is that the number you want to stick with?
That, well.
Cause it would actually be like five twenty one if you went to the twenty three.
Okay, cause the. You can't pull the tax, you pull the fiscal year after the election, so we wouldn't actually be pulling tax until January or July. The fiscal year after the year we voted in, so July of twenty three.
You know, was that the number you were supposed to use for your calculation for your math?
I have that with me. But, oh.
So is that the number that's getting filled into this blank space here on the annual revenues collected?
It will be, yes.
Not exceed five hundred and four thousand?
That, that's all we can get.
Oh, that's the max again, too.
That's all we can get.
Doing the max levy, and that's what they're figuring, it'll take at least how to operate.
So, I mean, we're barely, it's gonna be a tight budget on that, um, we're gonna barely get by with what we can get. Um, but if you guys wanna do something different, that's totally fine by me.
Well, I don't think it's a good job, I think it should be a combination myself, but I don't know what you guys.
Tell me, is it coming down this whole time ambulance services center of the county, or are we still partnering with Lake Mills four two?
The, that hasn't been ironed out yet, that's gonna be part of our town hall meetings, but in order to get. A service in the center of the county will cost as much.
Yep.
Um, how it works with, with four city and Lake Mills, that's yet to be determined, but that's what our town hall meetings are gonna. Reflect.
If you look at the county, Kansas is in the middle, if you take out Silver Lake Bristol and Fertile, which is Lake Mills, Lake Mills and. Four City, you take that off, then you're looking at the middle, but if that ends up where this ambulance is gonna cover all of Worth County. Then it's not the center, but then we don't really have a place to put it in the center, unless you want to stick it out the casino. And that isn't the center either, we have to drop south of there. What's that?
Silver Lake Church, or no, Silver Lake, okay.
Elk Creek, yeah.
Actually, what's the, that's it, sir.
I got a, another thing, I was on the phone for four days with people in my district. I had a, this started kind of before I got on the board here, got off, and there's a lack of E M T. And because of the amount of C U's and everything else, it's getting more and more of a nightmare to get them, is. Mason City Fire Department. When they come in here because of Medicare and the fact that Medicare only pays a certain amount, and they bill the insurance company. Are they in a position where they might start billing Worth County just to come into Worth County? And is that where that two hundred and ninety thousand I heard from people is coming from?
Yeah, yes.
So we could end up paying two hundred and ninety thousand dollars off the top before we even have anything going on.
Yes, there.
Now, why can't Lake Mills and Four C do the same thing? They could start billing us coming into Bristol and Silver Lake and into Fertile, so we could get hit with three of them. Because everybody's got the same problem with this.
Right, so my, yeah, my question, but you said, you know, five hundred and.
Five four thousand.
And we generate. And then all of a sudden, what you're saying, also know the other entities start asking for their share, so then is that enough to operate the ambulance in the center of the county, or close to the center of the county?
Well, right now, if. Things go the way the committees lean and Mason City would be in Kansas.
Okay.
Um, and they are prepared to take the entire county. However, that discussion needs to be made with some of the people over in the western side, um.
A little bit to the east, too, I suppose, how do we get?
We'll see, graph that has nothing to the east, north, it travels clear to the east.
Clear northeast part of the county, there's only, only way to get there, and that's go through Minnesota at some places.
Right, so that, that county is actually more vulnerable, or that, that portion of the county is more vulnerable than anything.
That's just curious.
Um, yeah, everything else is pretty much, it's, it's the, it's, yeah, it's Barton Township is really vulnerable.
And one of, one of the things, when we talked with the four city and Lake Mills, Lake Mills right now is having a bad staffing problem.
Yep, I talked to Terry yesterday.
The other part is their citizens over there, because they're going through the same thing, they're saying, we might, why are you going to Worth County? Why are you providing a service?
And if you come up short of the bill, why are we paying it, you know?
Exactly, so I mean, there's still a lot of discussion that's going on in these committee meeting on what we really do have and what we don't have, because there's answered questions over that way, too. And it's been very well brought up in the meetings, that we want everybody to have their choice of which service they want, the fertile area and, and the, you know, the Joyce area, if that's what they want to stay with, but. They need to know the whole story that there is some issues going on, and hopefully, we can get that straightened out.
And on the other side of the coin, you've got three townships sitting over there, one fourth of the county. That is going to pay property tax on this, and yet their ambulance service is coming out of Lake Mills and Four City.
But see, the discussion on that is, if they want to stay with it, then possibly we would fund them with some of that money coming out of that.
We do.
If they would even come over, if they don't get shut off by coming into Worth County, that's the question that's gonna be answered.
So then they was doing exactly the same thing.
Right, and right now, from what I've heard, Lake Mills is looking at only partially having an ambulance service during the daytime hours, is that right?
Something like that, yeah. So is that, if they were to pull some money out of it? That would be out of the five hundred and four thousand, which is the maximum we can do, would we still have enough to do our own? If we start, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be really tight, and we'd have, there's been no negotiations yet, there'd still have to be some negotiations, and some we've talked about with the committee, I mean, this is the first thing they've thrown out at us, so we go back to Mason, do some negotiation.
Unfortunately, I mean, you know, this is something we're trying to put on a ballot, so the people do have the right to say no to how it's done, I mean, if we decide to go ahead and make it a ballot issue.
Which I'm all for, is the citizens having, but I've noticed how people vote.
Well, it's pretty simple.
They go and vote for one or two people, and then they go, yes, 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 and it's like, you didn't read nothing, and I know what's going on.
Best, best majority of the population of Worth County, it's not gonna affect them as much as it is some other people dollar wise. You know, it's, it's gonna cost me probably six, seven hundred dollars, it's gonna, I know several landowners, it's probably gonna cost two, three thousand dollars. You know, and can they afford it? Possibly, but you know, is it fair? No.
No, that's why I was a proponent all along of at least do the one percent surtax on your income tax, so everybody.
Those, those same farmers, those same landowners, same people still pay the same.
Well, yeah, I should realize that.
They're gonna pay that person, too.
It is gonna change a whole lot, it just looks, it makes everybody get involved.
It may cost them more because of their income.
And that's, if you got that much income, you could probably afford it anyway. Is it fair? It's never gonna be fair.
It's not the fair way to do it, I agree with you guys, it's not, but. Maybe there's no other, that's just what the state gives you.
You know, basically, what we've done is we, we've all decided that it's, it's an essential service, we've turned around and said, okay. We're gonna have to go the max on the levy, but now we're gonna vote on that. And it's, it's a fifteen year deal, but I did read on that code, when I read the, when I read it in the code, you can also get out of it. You know, with a.
Right, with another.
Petition.
Petition.
We can get petition.
And you guys decided to go to fifteen years.
It's, that's.
Cause you could go less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But says a maximum fifty, you could go ten, you could go twelve, you could do fourteen.
With the amount of money on the investment, we're gonna, you're gonna see a minimum of probably a five year contract with somebody, so we have to go.
At least ten or more.
Yeah, we have to give it a chance, otherwise.
Unless, there's a problem, it's proper to kind of keep up with the, your roughly eight to nine percent year increase in cost running an ambulance service. Cause between wages and benefits, it's gonna be eight to nine percent a year. It's not even company, that's or anything else, but just wages and benefits.
And if we leave it like.
I mean, are you gonna get staffed?
Have we talked to Mason City Fire and Ambulance about leaving it the way it is?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I.
That's where the two hundred and ninety two thousand came from. That wasn't there before.
That would be just the center part of the county.
That would be the area they cover now, from the interstate.
It would take them three townships out.
Yeah, and so the only reason they haven't come to the county and asked for money up until now is because they know we've been working on this for a number of years.
Yeah.
That's the only reason they have not, because they were prepared to come up three years ago and ask for money because of the service they're providing up here, and the way Medicare and everybody else pays is, insurance pays. They see.
Collecting.
Thirty, what, thirty two to thirty five percent tops recuperation.
Sorry, they didn't buy them.
Taxpayers, Mason.
Mason City's been fun.
That's, taxpayers are picking up the tab.
And they're, they're picking up our tab, they have done for years.
And I can see where they're.
They don't make, they don't make money at it, and that's what, that's why EMS has become such an issue in this, as a statewide thing.
Yeah.
Nobody makes money at it, it's, it's a service.
It's nationwide, it's not just here.
Yeah, it's everywhere, yeah, it's everywhere.
Especially in rural communities, it's tough.
Yeah.
And the Northwood Fire Department put in kind of a bid, well, kind of a.
Suggestion.
Suggestion. And does that, in other words, instead of farming this out to Sarabota County and the Mason City Fire Department. Would it be better to do it internally in here, do we? Is that a possibility and maybe save ourselves a little cost?
The proposal we have seen for that, the committee has seen, was five hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah.
We've seen three different, three or three different proposals, and it comes in the neighborhood of like five twenty to five sixty. And that is becoming either city of Northwood employees or Worth County employees. Option, um, that does not cause, that does not bring in the cost of an ambulance, just one ambulance, there would not be a backup.
Yeah, it'd be just this area too, basically.
Well, no, it would go to Kansas.
It would go to Kansas.
It would go to.
They don't have any problem.
Still wouldn't do the outer, outer lane townships.
They have, they want to start one that's county, Worth County, employees, Worth County.
Gotcha.
They want to cover all twelve townships.
And the, the, one of the biggest things there is, right now, you're paying for that, they take the liability, the lawsuits, everything down there. You start making our employees and that, we take over the, the H R part, we take over the lawsuits, we take over all that. Is that something we want to go to, and, and Blake was supposed to come in and meet with me a couple of weeks ago, because I found a lot of problems in his additions that he put in there. And I was gonna sit down and kind of go through the budget with him, he still hasn't shown up to see me.
To, to start our own Worth County, we figured with one ambulance equipped is almost three hundred thousand. You put that on top of roughly five fifty, and then that still doesn't have a house to put it in, so we're looking at a million plus to start our own.
Or even.
So the reason why the committee is leaning on Mason City pretty hard is because they're established, they take care of everything, they take their responsibility.
So then the next question I've got is, which I brought up to you before at these meetings. Is this ambulance then that's going to be. Provided by Mason City Fire and Rescue, gonna go to Mayo? Will it take you both ways if it's not life threatening?
They'll take you to the nearest hospital that can provide you the level of care you need.
Do you have a choice in where you say, okay, I just broke my ankle, I want to go to Mayo? Because when you go out to Silver Lake, that's one of the things I ran into, in church, I asked, and, well, they'll take me to Mayo, and that's where I want to go.
If, if they can, if Albert Lee is the closest and provides that care, then you can go to Albert Lee.
Yeah.
Cause there's a lot of people out there, I mean, we're twenty minutes from Albert Lee and thirty five, forty minutes from Mason City.
If you're having a heart attack or a stroke, you're going to Mason City.
They'll take the Mayo and Albert Lee, and then they'll transfer, transfer from there.
If you're badly burned, you're gonna be flown right to Iowa City.
Yeah, it's gonna be a chopper deal.
If you're just going wherever that level of care is you need, that's the closest hospital you're gonna go to, and it could be Albert Lee, and if it's over in, um.
If, like, Deer Creek.
It could be awesome.
Way up in the northeast corner of Deer Creek.
Yeah.
Ridiculous to go all the way down here when you go to Austin, so they're going, they're willing to do that.
Yeah.
This isn't gonna be a battle in the ambulance, while you're laying there with a disc.
Their, 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 their protocol is to get you to the, the proper place for the level of care you need.
So, so they're gonna change their policy there a little bit.
Uh, that's their policy now.
That's supposed to be.
Yeah.
He's.
I'm ready for, yeah, I could see from experience.
But broken hips are.
Different.
A little different, it's not just like a, a broken arm or broke, you know, you have, if we, if you get moved wrong, you can pinch, you can pinch the artery.
In real trouble.
And you can bleed out right there, you can bleed out and die from broken hip, so there, it's a little more. It seems like it, but it's a little more critical than people think, just the wrong move, getting you on, off of that cot, can, can, you can bleed out and die. So, I, I, but I do get it, but yeah, if, if you can get the, the care you needed, Albert Lee or Austin, they will take you there, but that's the paramedics' decision at the time. And that's why you see ninety to ninety five percent go to Mason City, because they can give you all those levels of care. Stroke, heart attack, let's say burns, that's a whole different.
Oh, yeah, let's face it, you know, most of the time, you're gonna go to Mason City from here. But if you want to go to.
But it.
Mayo.
If you had a doctor that you were, for especially on broken hip or something like that, you know, broken ankle, that's a little different.
Well, when I go down there and they send me up there, what's used to going down there first?
Bounce around another ten thousand. Moving fast.
But.
So, yeah.
So, you know, it's gonna cost us, if we do nothing, it's gonna cost us two hundred and ninety thousand.
They're gonna come ask for it.
Well, they're gonna come ask for it, and then we could still have, we could have Winnebago ask us if that stays. They could come in and ask us for money, too.
Winnebago County Services.
Cause their system works the same as Mason.
Can we? Levy for that kind of, I mean, without, you know, the two hundred and ninety or whatever, what these other counties would be asking for, I mean. Versus trying to start a full time ambulance service with a levy?
Yeah, if they came up with the number, if they come up with the number that was, say, four hundred thousand instead of five hundred thousand.
Levy for that amount.
Yeah, but.
We still have to go through the voting process.
Yeah, still go through that, and the services do not change.
Correct.
You're still getting the ambulance out of Mason City, you're still getting, you know, forcing Lake Mills, you would not have one here. So your, your transport times and all that stay exactly the same, nothing changes, you still get a bill.
Right.
So for another hundred thousand approximately. We get, we get an ambulance sitting in Kansas.
Except we're gonna have to roughly, we're gonna have to come up with at least forty five thousand a year, every year after that, minimum for increases. It's not one time, I mean, this.
This is just, this is just the beginning.
That's the hard part about this.
Even valuation, man.
Even with valuation, I mean. Valuation goes up two, three percent, like you say.
I mean, like additional.
Well, or that additional valuation would help, yeah, if you could, you could get that, I mean, but that. But that's always two or three or four or five years down the road, it doesn't happen overnight, and.
So we've got two hundred and ninety thousand right now, and we could add. Maybe some more to it, and for five hundred thousand, we get our own ambulance here.
Plus, if two hundred and ninety thousand, we're just covering the cost that they're already eating, so.
Yeah, they're eating that, plus, it could be higher than that, yeah.
Yeah, well, their costs are gonna go up every year, too, so I mean, they're gonna, they're not, they're gonna continue to pass that along.
And then it would go on just like it is now, where it's coming out of Mason City, where this one would be coming out of Kansas. So everybody likes the idea of getting an ambulance in Worth County, it's just how to go about paying for it, location of it. And, you know. We just don't quite have a town right in the middle of the county.
Staffing is impossible.
Yeah. But I still go back to my original question, then, on this resolution, I don't like not having the one percent local option income surtax in there, I don't like that at all.
Cause one passed yet, we can add it.
And then the other thing I.
I don't know that dollar number, but.
And then the other thing that I question is, though, I really think that. The maximum you can do is fifteen years, I think you do, I think you should try it for like ten years, and at least get an even number, so we don't have to have a special election. Is that, at fifteen years, you're gonna have a.
It'd be an odd year.
It'd be an odd year, so. But I can, I'm more concerned about that one percent local option income surtax.
We can add it, can we, Jackie?
I'm not an attorney.
I'm just gonna add to the language of the same as the.
We can ask.
As the. Property tax.
Because if, if we vote. We, we miss.
If we do this resolution today as is.
We're gonna, it's all on the property tax, and if we voted down, we just missed the election deal, now we got a special election for it, and that costs money, so. What do you need a motion?
We need to get this resolution through.
Yeah.
And then we can adjust it after we.
Well.
We could, we could pass it, we could pass it based on the addition of. One percent income surtax.
Right.
Am I right by saying that, and then that would go, that would be passed as that, that would get published that way.
And it is one, and it is one percent the max, and we can use, that's a.
You, you could levy for, for a month, plus the one.
I'm not sure if I need a. Dollar amount for that, too, or. Ask right away.
That varies from year to year, too.
That's, that's such a, I think, I, when that comes through, I think you get paid monthly from the state, because it varies that much. It's what gets reported to the state.
Or you two.
Yeah, like on everybody that, when they pay our taxes, do all that stuff, they report that to the state, the state grabs that one percent and then sends it back to you.
I'm surprised it sent to the monthly, but it'll hold on to stuff.
Because it changes that much, they give, they can give you an estimate of certain dollar amount, and then it's. So, yeah, if you wanna add that, I think it's. Yeah, if you wanna add that, I think it's. I would like to at least add the one percent local option income surtax.
Amy's on right now, I don't know, she can help us out.
She wrote, or somebody wrote that about her, didn't they?
Um, that's, um, when, I'm guessing that was when.
No, no, I mean the resolution.
Oh, yeah.
Now's office prepare that?
Yeah.
Yes.
But that, it was Emily Hammond that got it to me. See if I can unmute her.
Hello.
This is the wrong subject, but we're wondering if you could get an answer for us possibly.
Um, yeah, like, I do not, I heard the conversation, I do not have the answer, but I can get an answer. When we get done with our conversation this morning. But why don't you tell me just restate what your, what your question is, so I can get it over to Dan Off or Emily Hammond?
So we have a resolution sitting in front of us to put. EMS tax on the ballot for this fall. We would like to um, add, we're able to do a a property tax, we'd like to add a income, surincome tax. Can we approve this resolution by adding that to it? And once we get an estimated number from the state, put that in the the addition of the resolution.
Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and then if, if there are issues with it, we'll deal, we'll deal with it, I'll I'll talk to Dan Off about it. But you're wanting to put an income tax levy in there?
Yes, as well as the property or the the uh, property surtax.
Yeah, we're allowed by.
State to put a one percent local option income surtax. Which is an EMS income tax, along with our EMS property tax that we already did.
And unfortunately, unfortunately, this is time sensitive, I'm trying to get it to the newspaper.
Right. I'll check on it and make sure no issues.
Shot an email to Emily.
Okay.
I mean, we haven't approved this resolution yet, so technically it could be. Paragraphed in on the bottom of it, and then approved as a whole, instead of approving and amending it or whatever.
I think you can just approve it with that mod, you know, with that modification to it.
That's what I would hope for.
If, hang on, if you wanna hang on real quick.
Yeah, let's, we can switch to urban renewal.
Yeah, we can switch.
Yeah.
Let's switch, run out to urban renewal, Matt Blam.
Yeah, do you want me though, um, do you want me to put you folks on hold real quick and get an answer to your question, see if I can get ahold of John or Emily to. To get an answer to your question. Okay, let me see if I can get one of them, hang on, okay?
Well, you saw the Win Winworth Betco message, she had to go.
Okay, I didn't look at it, I guess. Chris, I guess you could, yeah, anything.
My report, and then uh. Actually, meeting last month, I've been having trouble with the insulin sampler and the tech showed up when I got back and. We end up having to put a configuration unit for twenty-eight hundred dollars, but. That was, that was it, and then. I've got uh, scheduled, we're supposed to pull the mixer out of the tower either Thursday or Tuesday after the, after the holiday. Send that in. Get repaired and maybe look at. Doing a different type of mixer, so we're putting it in the other tower. But, the mixer we have now needs. I think it's at six feet of water above the top of it to make it work great, and then we'll have enough water in the other tower than the big tower. If it's so big, there won't be a lot of white water in the tower. So we may go through an open and pillar style mixer, or it doesn't need the head of water above it to make it work, so.
Yeah, if, yeah, if we're gonna get something new, let's get something we could take with us.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, because then at least we can use it in that oven.
Right, and then the open pillar wouldn't bother us in the old tower because it won't suck it up through that vein and plug that vein.
Sure, they'll just, it'll just be in there. Turbulate in the water.
Yeah, it's like, kinda like, kinda like, it looks like some of the old uh, nerve chopper pump, kind of what it looks like.
And that's all submersible.
It's all simple, it's all stainless steel, it's all sealed, you just drop, it's got like the span, you just clap them and drop it in the hole and. They open up and you just lower it down with the power cord, such on the bottom, just like the other one.
Okay. Well, that sounds like a.
You should have been treated that, cause it's only two years old, so.
Get something back out of it.
Yeah.
No, that sounds good.
I'll keep the press on how that turns out, or what, I'll I'll work with Jason on that too and see what he thinks.
Yeah. Yeah, that station looks good, I see, yeah, that's good, yep. And then you gotta do sludge as fall.
Yep, every spring and fall, yeah.
Four minutes. Supervisor weekly then, I guess.
I have.
Is everybody there? John, did I, John, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, Amy.
Okay, all right, folks, I got the expert, so we can get an answer to your question now.
Hey, John, we've got, we've got a resolution sitting in front of us. Um, your office made it. You know all about it, you seen it?
I I I prepared it, yes.
Perfect, okay, we would like to add. Uh, income surtax that we're eligible to. Um, impose with this EMS tax, we'd like to add that language to this. Can we do that through a motion on this resolution to approve it with the addition of the one percent local? Income surtax or however it spells out in the, the bill?
That's fine. Fine, and ju- just give us a little bit and we'll rewrite the resolution to reflect that change. Um, and get that back over to you today for execution.
Okay. We just wanna, yeah, we just wanna make sure, if we can pass it now, make the amendment, and then when it goes to the paper, that it will have the proper language in it.
Yeah, yes, let let me, let me ask you a couple of quick questions. Um, you you're wanting that to go for the, the fifty, the same fifteen-year window as the property tax?
I'd like to change it to ten. Can we change it to ten?
Are you, uh, let me put it to you this way, I, I would, I would have you pick the same window of time for both taxes.
Correct, yeah, the thing with the ten year, it falls on an election year instead of the fifteen where it'd be a special election.
The law allows up to fifteen. A couple of the other counties we've worked with have picked ten for whatever reason. So, what, whatever you guys wanna do, I I just. I I would have you not try to do one time, go for the property tax in a different time window for the income surtax.
Right, no, I agree with you on that a hundred percent.
You're just gonna confuse the voters, I'm afraid.
Yeah, we need to do the same for both of them, so.
Don't need, need to decide it, but I I do need to know that window. Uh, in addition to that, on the income surtax, you're allowed to go up to the max rate of one percent. On the annual income tax of the individual, is that the percentage you wanna use for the max rate, one? I'm sorry, was that a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I missed that. Um, and then I, I wanna be clear to you folks, the the way we write this. It will not be separate ballot propositions, it will be one. Having the voters vote on this combination of taxes, property tax and income surtax. With one yes, no vote, is that what you were envisioning?
Yes.
And then, um, the last thing, if you haven't already talked about it, you'll see a blank was left in the resolution. For you to state the annual maximum of tax revenues to be. Claimed by the county through these levies. We will need you to fill in that blank, and it is, the way we have, will have it set up. But I'm just gonna make up a number, let's say you plug in half a million dollars a year, uh, don't ask me where that came from, but. That's just a number that I picked. Um, then the way this would work is each year you would have the option of. Dialing up the income surtax or the property tax levy. Or a combination of the two, up to, but not exceeding the maximum rates. Putting on your ballot in order to yield that annual maximum of revenue.
So we will need a guesstimate, we'll need a guesstimate for the surtax too then.
Total.
Well.
Add it, add it to the property tax.
I would focus on filling in that annual maximum blank from more of a budgetary perspective. Rather than a tax yield perspective. Uh, unless your goal is to just try to max out, you know, pedal to the metal. Um, the amount of tax revenue you could bring in, then maybe you look at the max levy rate. And what the maximum yield for each one would be, uh, but that hasn't been the approach of most counties. That we've worked with, that they've had some kind of a, we need X amount per year in order to run this. We've accounted for inflationary pressures over the decade or whatever, so let's use X. As the annual maximum. To help run the emergency medical services. And then, you know, uh, kinda back into the levy rate.
We need, we need the max, what the max is gonna produce to make this work.
You, well, there you go, then hopefully you got somebody who can help you ballpark. What the income surtax might yield at one percent, I. My only, the only way I can be helpful to you there is to say I'd probably call the Department of Revenue. I'm assuming on the property tax side, you you all have the capability to ballpark that at the courthouse.
Yeah, we've got, we've got that number.
Sorry.
Yeah, we got that number, just the sur, income surtax number we wouldn't have. And does that need to go on there then, the income surtax number?
But this law requires that you state on the ballot. The aggregate maximum amount of revenue. That the county will bring in from the tax, or in this case, the tax is. And and you'll state one combined number, we've been expressing it in terms of an annual maximum. For fear that if you put the total maximum over the ten or fifteen-year window, that's gonna be a lot of sticker shop. On the ballot.
Right.
So we've been saying, you know, in this case, you know, shall the, shall the county. Uh, be authorized to impose a combination of the income surtax and the property tax. In an aggregate annual revenue amount not to exceed X for a period of Y years. And that, that, that's the way you're about to feed here, it's similar to what you're looking at with the property tax. But w- we build in this idea of of the combination of taxes.
Good.
So it sounds like you want ten years.
Ten years. I think that'll work. And then, the one percent is what you're saying.
I think we ought to make use of it.
Is this, is, so this resolution telling us for the next ten years, we can only collect, let's just use that half a minute, five hundred thousand dollars, we can never collect more than that?
Correct, you're right, you got.
So, so you're locking yourself in to guaranteeing that's gonna be a loss, you're not gonna, you're gonna fall behind the second year.
Well.
There's no way with inflation, so you're saying build in inflation, you need to put like, probably six, seven hundred thousand at least on that.
That's what I'm thinking, so if you're gonna cut yourself for the next ten years.
Even, even if property values rise, you get a little more money, boom, and all of a sudden ambulance costs us five hundred and sixty thousand dollars next year. We could, where are you gonna fund it?
And that's why I'm saying, mo- most folk have looked at that number from a budgetary standpoint. What what is our need, and how, given inflation, how is that need likely to increase? From year to year over the period in which we're authorizing this tax, and let that inform the number. Uh, I, I can't think of another situation where the legislature has done this. In combination with a tax authorization, where they require us to put an aggregate revenue number on the ballot. But that's the way this statute reads.
So I honestly think you're gonna need to put, I just did the math, so, say next year, it's easily gonna go up forty thousand dollars. If if you think you can operate at five hundred this year, next year it's gonna be another forty thousand dollars. Just put, just benefits.
Even if you figure out.
That's another four hundred thousand dollars, and that's just a flat four hundred, forty thousand a year, it's gonna take a minute, you need to put a minimum of a million dollars in that line. Over the ten years. So that we could collect enough revenue to keep it going, it doesn't do any good to put an ambulance service in any year from now, we're scratching for fifty thousand dollars to run it. Where are we gonna get? Where is it revenue and?
I think you need to put in a figure of at least eight hundred thousand in there.
Cause you can.
You may not always collect that, and you may not need that, but at least it gives you the opportunity to keep your ambulance going. Because the figure was high enough.
You can't collect more than the seventy cents and the one percent.
You're still locked in on that.
Still locked in a total out.
You're still locked into the one percent and the seventy-five cents, the only thing that's gonna adjust there is your SIS value.
It just.
And your income in the area.
It gives you adjustments for property va- you know, property value growth or property growth, we we bring in, you know, ready fuels or something else comes in, you have the ability to collect, you know. Of those situations or more homes are built, you know, otherwise. Otherwise you're capping, you can't cap that at five hundred thousand dollars, it'll never work.
Well, not when you gotta figure it out for the ten years, or however long you go, so.
And you decide on an annual basis how much, right, so if if you didn't need that much in a year, you you can charge less, right?
Correct.
But absolutely, yeah. Like the levy rate is authorized maximum.
Yeah, we're still locked into that levy rate in the one percent.
Exactly.
The bo- the bottom line here is, is that prudence would dictate that you take a budgetary look at this. And factor in what your costs are likely to do over the. And factor in what your costs are likely to do over the period in which the tax is being levied. The flip side of that is. You, you can't have so much sticker shock that people automatically vote no, and I. Uh, you folks are gonna ultimately have to decide how, where you draw that line. So. Could, could Jackie maybe email me, I'm, I, I jumped on, I've got another client commitment, I'm gonna have to jump. Over to here. Is, are there any other legal questions that I can answer for you?
Um, how, how do we proceed with this then, do they approve it? Do we approve it later, what, what, how do we do it?
Decide on, you know, ten years. One percent, and then the aggregate annual revenue maximum. Um, and that you want it changed to reflect the combination, somebody make a motion. That the resolution be amended by bond counsel. To reflect those four points. And, you know, vote on the motion, if it passes. Jackie or somebody send me an email and we'll get the resolution updated and back over to you by midday today.
So then they'll have to come back and pass it today, so it's before it gets in the newspaper.
We can do.
We can pass it as amended.
They can pass it as amended.
Okay.
As long as those points, those four points. Number of years. Add in the income surtax. Max rate on the income surtax and the annual aggregate maximum of combined tax revenue. Uh, they can pass that even though they won't have the verbatim version in front of them. So it's fine.
Thank you.
So, alright, thank you, John.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
I'll watch for an email. Good luck, folks.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay, so you, how do you wanna state it?
Well, first we got, we gotta come up with a figure.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, so, yeah.
Cause there's four things we gotta do, one, we gotta add a one percent local option income surtax to it, we gotta go to ten years, and then we gotta have. A total on the income surtax.
We have a total, a total dollar model together.
Well, I was hoping it was a.
Total dollar month, I believe.
Altogether, cause he said there's four things.
Not to exceed them all, basically is what you need.
Gotcha, so then.
How many years you want the, uh, uh, income surtax? He wants you to align that with the other.
We, we, we do the same, both of them same to not confuse everybody, so now we gotta come up with a figure there, you're saying a million.
Well, I just did rough numbers.
I'm just saying no less than eight hundred thousand. What do you think AJ, you've done more the penciling eye.
Well.
Did you do forecast thing?
Not necessarily. Well, because.
Cause you don't have a definite plan, you know, really.
No, we haven't nailed down, we knew we were gonna need the max to get this to even go, that's why the number came in at the max.
Yeah.
What our actual plan and would be. Of which service to use, whether he did one here, did Mason City, has not been decided yet, but we were on the number crunch time to get that figured out. Now we have to go with our plan and sell it to the voters, and that committee knows that we're start.
And we're crunch time to get that done.
But we don't have the option to come back and amend this later if we don't have enough dollars in there.
Right.
And you can't operate something at a loss. I mean, where are you gonna make it up? And just throw money in there if you haven't, I mean, it's, it's like fire, it's like, you know.
We need more work and more information on this.
Well.
Well.
Are you ready for a vote?
You know, there's, we're falling, there's one, one or two counties in State Iowa that have done this, and you know.
Right county, love the way, basically.
Yeah.
You know Floyd did it, Winnebago did it, cause I talked to both of them.
Yeah.
Butler's doing it.
I mean, everybody's doing it now, but it hasn't been like it's been a ten year deal where, okay, we know the cost of running this. We don't, the county budget does, you take a look at what it does and. Uh, you know, unless revenue really increases to keep up with just the levy.
And Worth County is such a different one.
Small county.
We're the only one that doesn't have an ambulance service or a hospital in the county, so ours is totally different from the rest of them.
But yet if we don't do nothing, we're gonna get billed. For being near all of it anyway. So we might as well, yeah.
And if it doesn't pass, then what?
Yeah, that's our, we're just trying to come up with the best scenario and let the citizens figure out what they wanna do it. But we do need that number in there.
But we don't wanna cut or shut, you know, you don't wanna cut yourself short either.
No, we don't wanna sit here and go, okay, we can't keep the thing running.
Right.
Makes no sense how they word that, because then it makes it seem like it's gonna cost. Seven hundred thousand dollars a year run, or it's not, but I get the idea of.
You can't go over it.
The future, but we, we can't even produce that much in tax.
Yeah, no, that's what I mean, that's why.
It's, it's, it's just stupid how they're, they're making it do that.
And that's where the sell comes in.
Right, right.
That's where the what comes in.
Sell, so you're gonna have to explain it, that that's the way it works.
Yeah, this is really gotta be. People gotta know what they're voting on here, boy.
I, I'm gotta be in that seven hundred fifty thousand then, maybe eight hundred thousand, I don't know.
Oh, hey Amy, you're still there, sorry. Probably wanna get to urban renewal, don't you?
I mean. I just, yeah, took about that number for ten years.
That's true. And I mean, I guess. Somewhat you would hope that you always have a little bit of cushion left, it isn't, you take in seventy cents, thousand, or one percent, and whatever that adds up to. You actually build a budget reserve.
You can't do that.
You can't, no, that's foolish too.
I know, you basically, we, we'll bring a report to you. Your EMS director will bring a report to the supervisors and to the public. Uh, every year stating what was spent on what, how much is here, so if we taxed and we took in six hundred thousand and we spent five hundred.
Right.
We lower the rate, the levy rates to adjust to that.
What do we do with the hundred thousand collected over?
It stays there, but you lower the rate for next year, and you use that, you have your reserve, but you don't get to take another six hundred thousand. It, it makes you ride the roller coaster.
Cause they had a really bad year, you spent seven hundred fifty thousand.
You guys on the committee have undoubtedly done a study on how much money we can generate. What is the figure?
For tax?
What he sent, what he's telling you, five hundred and.
Five hundred and four thousand dollars.
That's just the property.
Property tax.
But, so even.
So if Winnebago is doing ninety, we're gonna be less than that, because they got a bigger population or whatever. You're looking at.
Winnebago can't even generate that much in property tax, we're generating more property tax than they are, they only generate four hundred and thirty something thousand.
With full seven.
They, they have to go max two, and it's not enough.
We just wanna make sure we're covered. So we gotta.
A big county doesn't have a lot of big industry.
It's in Hancock.
They got more people, but we got more.
Yeah. They're big tax bases in their county, even though half the cities in their county.
Right.
I, I mean. I guess you didn't ask John, but what's a resolution that can be amended, can't it? Or is that not able to be since it goes on? Well, I mean.
This is just a resolu- this is just a resolution of both, I mean, put it on the ballot, so I don't, you know, and then.
We gotta have it right on the ballot, though.
Yeah, that, the, the, or not to exceed.
Not to exceed, yeah.
Even though we can't produce that much stuff, but a not to exceed number.
Correct.
Because at some point you may exceed that number. In the meantime, you gotta work on your legislation to try and get things changed so that this. Can get produced, you know, this tax can get done differently, you know, there has been discussion of sports betting money going towards us for the entire state, well. Is that still a possibility, you know, try to get it changed so you can, they can help assist with some of this too. You know.
I don't know, it's been something new.
Right. Yeah, they obviously know it's a problem in the entire state, then they should help fund, it's like mental health, they should help fund it, I think.
Absolutely, but.
And why aren't the cities involved too?
As far as.
Getting the whole plan together.
Yeah, well.
I mean, kinda they are, but.
There, I mean, they're all gonna get taxed as well.
Right.
And they're the ones that have some services right now, so why aren't they involved in this?
As far as all this, has having first responder services, well, that thing.
But we gotta get back to Amy, cause Amy has been waiting.
Okay.
Yeah, let's check it even, cause she might have other. Obligations.
Go ahead, Amy.
Sorry.
Hi guys, no, that's alright, no problem at all, how, where do you, what, what, what do we want to address here, I think. The biggest thing is we're, we're inching closer and closer to being able to. Um, get the urban renewal amendment done. The one thing that we really. Have to get ironed out is the property description, we know we're adding pipeline property. We know. Um, that we're adding windmills. We know that we have some streets that we wanna improve. Um, but. Um, the one thing. Is how do we go about getting the right of, right of way added to the urban renewal area? And what AJ and I discussed was that. You know, it might be easiest to just add all of the public right of way in the county. That would help. Um, to keep your urban renewal area contiguous. Um, which is not a requirement that's written into the code that an urban renewal area be contiguous, but.
And that also helps us with any future projects, roads, bridges, anything like that. We'd have to amend our plan to include this bridge, that bridge, that road.
But not the map.
But not the map.
That's done, we just come in and say we wanna amend, we add these three projects in there. Public hearing, we move on.
Right.
Right, Amy?
Yeah, um, John did too.
Hello? Yeah, okay, I wonder when I cut off, that was strange.
About, about making the, uh, right of way contiguous, or do all the right of ways so you can stay contiguous.
Okay, yeah, so how are we, how are we feeling about adding all of the public right of way?
Great, great.
Then we wouldn't have to update the plant or the map every time there's another road.
Well, you would have to update the plan.
Yeah, for the project, but not the map.
Describe the project, but right, yeah, you're right.
That seems like the feasible thing to do.
Okay, so, um. Jackie, that means, um, we'll need to get the consent of all of the cities. Um. Which we'll prepare for you, no problem, we, we've got a, a form ready to go. I think you'll wanna get those distributed, you know, if you can do that here within the next couple days, just so that. They have on the head of their September meeting. Um. Then. Then we'll be able to keep the urban renewal process moving along, and I think. We have a call scheduled sometime this week with Heidi Cool. To discuss, um. The, the financing, the proposed financing for this year too, so. Um, we can get that urban renewal plan amendment schedule buttoned up. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Okay, what other questions can I answer for you?
I think that's all, I mean, cause with that, if we do the, all the roads, that'll help. With ease of the guarantee on the pipeline too, correct? Because that's now, that's all gonna be in the right of way.
Should, yep. If it's all in the right of way, then. Then maybe the engineer can take a look. At the description that I used for the right of way, it was just one sentence. Jackie, if you can pass that along.
I looked at it last week.
Oh, you looked at it, it's okay?
Pretty simple to me, why make it more complicated?
Hey, good. Awesome.
Not an attorney, but.
He is an engineer.
Keep it simple.
Okay. Good, wonderful. Okay, Jackie, we'll get you those, um, city consents to distribute to. Folks with the cities, and we'll keep moving this along.
Well, would a board member need to be at those city meetings, or they just have to go over it?
It's not a legal requirement, um. For anyone to attend the meetings, we just need them to sign it.
Okay.
Um, so. You know, just if you can, and I, you can email it to. Them, I don't, a- and then it, it might not be a bad idea to call them. Too. Just so that they don't miss, cause if they miss. They miss it at their September meeting.
Will put us behind.
Then it'll be a big, it'll be a big pain, yeah. Well, thanks everybody, we'll keep moving this along, and you guys all have a great week.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Bye.
See ya.
Alright. Back to the resolution. We need. It'd be a little less now, cause you're only, it's just like wages and benefits, one, every year, there'd be other operating costs, be about twenty five hundred bucks a year, twenty five to three, somewhere near. You know, per year, but then the operating cost will go up a little bit, I mean, easily five to ten more a year, you're gonna need. You know, and then it goes up. That's your total dollars go up.
So if it jumped thirty thousand dollars a year for ten years, you're gonna be three hundred thousand on top of five hundred thousand, so you're looking at eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, you're in it, yeah.
And hopefully, we can, hopefully.
I think we'd be good, I mean, I think we'd be well covered at that, and if it's explained right.
Because. Uh, the thing is, we're not, we're not the only ones that are gonna be in this situation.
No.
Five years down the road, if the increases continue, every single county that's doing this.
We just gotta make sure that we gotta figure in there that we don't end up going, oh, where this is, we can't keep our ambulance.
Exactly.
We're short fifty thousand or a hundred thousand.
Well, and that's the thing is, it's, the way it looks, it's not ever gonna produce up to that amount of. I mean, it'd be fifty years down the road before it would produce that amount of values and everything, go up and up and up and up, to produce that kind of money, it's not gonna happen. But that's just a number that needs to be on there too.
Now, we're still, originally you said that when they do the insurance, anything insurance pays, the county would get that.
That will come back, that will come towards the operation, cause what Mason City has presented to us now is just. Wages and the personnel, basically. They're buying the ambulances, they're buying the equipment, they're maintaining that stuff, so any revenues of that would go towards. The purchase of that stuff.
Gotcha.
Because in all honesty. It, it, it would most likely cost close to eight hundred thousand dollars. Just to have to buy an ambulance and staff it, you know.
For due to.
To get started, yeah, to, to get started. Cause you're looking at three hundred thousand dollars for an ambulance, equipping, what's, ready to go. So. Yeah. Eight hundred seemed like a better number.
I think you've, you've covered that, I mean, I'm hoping that's extremely actually, but.
I'm hoping it's. Massive. I'm hoping it's massive.
But it isn't like, yeah, so you just gotta explain, we're not actually gonna go up and collect that.
No, we just need to make sure. We just got a ceiling up here.
Revenue and everything, and everything, everything's still gotta fall into place to ever get to that number anyway, like you said, evaluations have to go up. Whatever, so. And they haven't changed the fire levy for years, so chances of changing the EMS levy are pretty slim too.
Yep. And the EMS levy is considerably higher than the.
Yeah.
Fire levy.
Thankfully.
Maximal. But, yeah, it's gonna be fire department around, it's eighty twenty, medical versus fires. When it comes to where the expenses are at. So.
Brand a motion?
Yep.
Make your motion.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to add to the resolution. A one percent local option income surtax, better known as EMS income tax. And that both the EMS income tax and the EMS property tax be a total of ten years. And that the combined annual revenue collected through the EMS property tax and the EMS income tax. Shall be in the amount not to exceed eight hundred thousand dollars.
Per year.
Per year.
Zero second.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moving a second, more discussion.
We beat this one though.
Yeah, we did, we needed to, so there'll be a real call, will, willber?
I.
Stone.
I.
Maybe, name. Motion will carry, okay. To get that.
So then, resolution next, as amended.
Okay, so I will take a motion for the, uh, resolution as amended.
I'm making a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
For a second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moving second, any more discussion? Right now, it'll be real call, willber?
I.
Stone.
I.
It's maybe name. Motion will care, okay. And then when you, they get that back to you legal sometime today, this one we know. Okay, Melissa was done, Chris is done, or, um, Bartman, it's, I suspect, the innocent, so please, we please.
I had North Iowa Long Term Disaster Recovery Committee, and after all these months of trying to put this thing together. We have finally finalized, we finalized our financial policies and our act, application activity policies. And then we set up open house events, and tentatively, right now, the open house event for this. For Worth County is on February sixteenth, we decided to do an open house in each one of the four counties.
This will be like here at the fire station or something right here.
It'll be at the emergency operations center over here, this. We'll see.
Good, good, all right.
And that's all I had.
Okay.
I went, uh, over to Emmsburg Care Connections, um. At the, really light meeting, um, we did approve. An extra school district within the region to get this, uh, wherever you're doing presentations, I think, in pretty much every school district within our region. Or my health, children, it's kind of a motivational speaker type, uh, deal. Um, this guy is something very good, travels all over the, the country doing this stuff, so. Uh, one of the Spencer Hospital brought this to us to try to do, they're gonna do it Clay County, and we asked that they did it everywhere. And, uh, so they are, they've got it set up with every school district, I believe, so they'll be doing that, I think, in October. And then, other than that, we, uh, everyone's doing pretty smooth over there, so that was kind of our biggest thing, other than our normal monthly meeting, so. That's all I had.
I had nothing last week, so. All right, anything for next week's agenda? Anything we're missing?
Doesn't sound like we're gonna have a other site plan review, do you see an email?
Yeah.
It looks like that's the final.
Okay.
That's the way I read it.
That's the way I can.
Was it actually gonna be a meeting, or were you just supposed to give our comments on?
I think each year comments, but I think we're not doing a, another Zoom meeting.
There's another meeting, so.
No, it didn't sound like it, it's all right, we, that's kind of what we approved, and if there's any comments, give them to them, and we're good to go, so.
Good.
On another note, the, um, second tranche for ARPA came through, so we have the full amount.
Yes.
How much of it hasn't been spent? Have you put a pencil on that? Between the first one and the second one?
Well, the seven was for the. Water, and then, where did the?
Well, three eighty-eight, or three seventy. Three seventy-two with the sixteen, and then we had another one on top of that, so there was another route.
We're still looking at about three hundred, two hundred fifty thousand.
The phones, phone systems like.
That didn't work right, that we're just putting that through norm, or through the general.
IT budget.
And the campground cameras and Wi-Fi fifty-six, that's now part of the three hundred and eighty-eight or three seventy-two.
That went through general too.
Okay.
Cause they didn't go through the hoops.
So we basically spent three hundred and seventy-two to eighty, well, when was it? Was it, we had a deduction in there of sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
Was that off the three eighty-eight?
There's about another thirty-two thousand on top of the.
The camera project, right?
All the, the total is like one point four three two or something like that. So, we already got the seven hundred out, and then we got three eighty-eight.
So we're still about three hundred thousand, three fifty thousand. Up another project or two or multiple small ones or whatever. Yeah.
All right.
We'll move to a jury.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
Second.